And welcome to the Rockland Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. Please direct your attention to Selectman Larry Ryan for the Pledge of Allegiance. Larry?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless the country.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS. A playback on Comcast, Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31 is also available live online at www wrpsrockland.com/tv. Government access full screen link or public access full screen link and within 24 hours via video on demand at www.youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Well, that's a different introduction than I'm used to, guys. You threw me off. Okay, Mr. Mullin will not be attending tonight. He had a prior engagement, so it was just the four of us tonight. Pretty, pretty quick agenda, starting off. Community announcements, healthcare worker of the week, Doug?
Thank you, Mike. I actually do not have a healthcare worker of the week to announce tonight. We did not get any nominations, so I would just encourage residents and anybody from the public to put in their nominations for healthcare worker of the week. And again, it can be anybody in the healthcare field, not just necessarily nurses. But we do have some other thoughts. We have, we have a couple of healthcare facilities located here in town and we are going to reach out to them. But I don't have a winner this week. And the only other big news, which I know Donna will talk about later, so I won't steal her thunder just regards the election, but we'll let her give her update. And other than that, I don't have any announcements tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, open session minutes of October 20, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion as second. All those in favor, Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. It's unanimous. Next on the agenda, new business. Highway Superintendent Dave Taylor, Highway and Tree Department update. So obviously, everybody in town is, is well aware that Dave and his team have been out there all summer long, all fall, and been doing a great job. So I thought it was appropriate now that the season is starting to wind down a little bit to invite Dave to give an update and kind of a preview of what might still be to come. So Dave?
Good evening. Just going to touch base on some bullet points. I'm going to start off on how we started off for the year. So I'll start off in the March, March project. So these are by date. So we started off late March, early April at the National Grid Project, which was consisted of Levin Road, Moncrief, Josh Gray and Brooks Road. So that area was prone to gas leaks over the last two years. And so National Grid reached out to us when the weather, weather was decent at that point. And we allowed them to come in under the agreement that they would be refurbishing that road. So they'll, we'll go through the winter with some light patching whenever it's needed. And then spring 2021, they will cut us a check to redo those, all those areas that were, that were disturbed during the construction services, sidewalk areas, berms, everything. So it was the first time we got to deal with National Grid. We've been trying to set this up for the last few years. So it's, they let us use our contractors and then that we have under procurement. And then we'll, we'll do the paving once we start 2021. The next project, which was, which was done was the Linden Street area. And take into consideration that this, this, the list that I'm going by wasn't the list that we started with in the winter. We had to move some things around, obviously, with the, everything going on around us with the, with the COVID rules and everything. So we had to switch a lot of projects up by dates and how we did our procurement and also how we dealt with our contracts and who we could actually bring in. So a lot of the road projects went around those obstacles this year. So the, the next project was Linden Street, Linden Court. That was a full reclamation. Well, we did this to go along with the downtown Union Street area. At the same time where we did Linden Street, we actually did the road that goes into the back of the stadium. So we call that Linden Rear now, that street, and actually goes behind the stadium. So we use the, a lot of the reclaim that we took up from Linden Street and we built up the new road with the materials that we recycled. We ran that out behind the stadium. At the same time, we rented a paver between us and another company and we worked between Highway and that company and we did removal and grading of the stadium. And then we added new paving at that, at that time. We also did the rear parking lot of the stadium where the new Parks Maintenance Building is at the same time. The next area we did was Liberty Street area, which we actually started last year. We ran into some issues last year with some drainage. We updated that. We did that, that area with Liberty Court, Old Donald Court, which were all full reclamations with their state top. And then we also did the Hackett Circle area at the same time while we were down there and we micro-surfaced those roads. The next area we went to was the West Water, East Water, Union Intersection. So this is the downtown area where the old boulder drum was in the Dunkin' Donutses. So we, we started that last year, so we were able to finish that up. So that was milled and paved along with the center, milled and paved. And then also the North Ave and Union Street intersection as well. The curbing sidewalks were updated in those areas and we'll be finishing up the striping over the next week or so in the North Ave area. The next section we, we, which was a leftover from last year as well, was the Upper Union from North Ave to VFW area. So we finished up the sidewalk on the odd side and the curbing. And we've raised all the structures. We worked with National Grid. So just so everybody knows, the reason why these things take so long is actually under the new DPU regulations, National Grid has, has to raise and repair any of their structures themselves now, where we used to do a lot of that in-house or sub that out. But with everything that's happened over the past few years, they own their structures along with working with the water department, which was great. They updated a lot of their structures at the same time and along with sewer and the drainage. Extensive drainage was done on Upper Union Street too, so at, at the same time. And that area went all the way up to VFW. So that area was just loomed and seeded last week. There's a couple of small punch list items, some walkways meeting sidewalks. We'll be doing that. And the next project was VFW Hadley, Union Street Intersection. So that was, five inch curbing was up there. So we actually restructured it, reused a lot of it, repurposed it, added some new pieces where we could to save some money, pulled out the old islands that were up there, restructured that. And we add a new vertical, six inch and five inch curbing in those areas. And reconfigured the, I'm sorry, we reconfigured the islands. It's because it was always a problem area when you were pulling out on the VFW where you couldn't see up or down Union Street. So we amended that situation and moved a couple of the lights as well. Added more traffic signage at the top of the street. And let me see, the next area was the Forest Street area. So that was a full reclamation down on the lower end where Power Mentor was. And that area was actually just completely deteriorated. There was no drainage down there, so we added a new drainage down on that area as well. Also added some new sewer structures down there to try to save on some INI. And that area is over to binder right now. We did the aprons on that area. We cut out the weak points on the upper end of Forest Street because that came back after the, after the core samples and the structure of that road was actually in pretty good shape. So next year, we'll actually finish Forest Street up. That'll be an overlay with a micro of the whole street. We'll do Power Mentor at the same time. West Pleasant, which is at the island, we'll be doing that at the same time. And we'll also be tying in Lincoln Road, which will be an overlay and a micro surface like we did on Hackett Circle. So we do try to do some of these side streets, not exactly the way we would like to take them down to, you know, bare, bare essentials and start from scratch. But while we're in those areas to do a road like Lincoln Road, it will cost, you know, $40,000. Now's the time to do it and we'll get another 12 or 15 years out of that road. We've been doing the drainage down there for the last two years and there's some sewer work we'll do in the spring of 2021 and then we'll finish up with those roads there. One of the last areas we're finishing up with right now is actually the East Water Liberty Street Intersection, which was originally, it was a four-way intersection with a three-way stop. So it was reconfigured and tightened the road format there. Added four new solar stop signs with actually four new stop ahead signs. The format, the design that's in place right now is set up for lights. If that's something the town wants to do in the future. We had to reconfigure Sunny Bank to go along with the four-way stop sign. So we took some of the Chapter 90 money that we had a lot of aside, reconfigured Sunny Bank and ran the curbing sidewalks down to Christopher Road. Keep in mind, this was a grant that we've been working on for, I think, since 2016, 2017, when we actually adopted the complete street. So was turned down the previous year. And then this year, we went to the state with everything going on to see if we could push it off to next year. We had to use the funds by December or we would have lost the funding for those programs. So we pushed it ahead with everything on. Also, this was a, this was a state intersection. I know people have had some questions about that. It is, the state has given this intersection to us, providing that we use their state specs, which we did. It was actually their state plan, their layout. So everything was to state specs, they signed off on it. So the project was done with a combination of the Complete Street Grants, which was $400,000. And we probably spent another $100,000 on it on the Chapter 90 to kick the format out to the Sunny Bank area after Christopher Drive. So that was a, that was a big area. And also, like I said, we did plummet or we added sleeves under the street, hand hole. So if there was any electrical work or lighting that down the road, it, it can be done. So we, we saved a lot of money doing that, doing it now as, as opposed to the future. But with the traffic study on that too, there was, there was literally a second or two difference between the stop, stop sign and the traffic lights. So, and I think, Mike, you touched on it, the traffic lights would cost between $250 and $300, depending on what type of traffic lights you're doing. Everybody sees what's been happening over on Route 18, all the way down from Abington all the way to East Bridgewater. And those are the, those are the roadblocks that they're running into right now because it has to be engineered, new traffic study, depending on the type of lighting you want to do. Keep in, keep in mind, you also would have to update pedestrian crosswalks and with ped crossings, push button peds. So that, that adds to the cost of that, you know, once we reconfigure that. So that was a big project where, where we're over there loom and seed. We're going to add some trees. So I know people have had some questions on why we took a lot of the trees down. So the reason why we do that is anything with, within the road format that we think that might cause a problem down the road, whether it be, you know, pushing up curbing or pushing up sidewalks, we, we removed those during construction and we add those trees back to a two to one ratio in that area, you know, with an offset, a safe offset from those structures. So those would be 10 to 15 feet off where we're at. All right, that was a mouthful. So the next area we're at is the recycle, the recycle center. So we had some funding for that to do. So we actually rebuilt that road up probably between 10 to 12 inches in thickness. A lot of that is material that we've had stored for a rainy day. So it was a rainy day, so we used it up. We, it solved a lot of the drainage issues by pushing that up. We've got everything over to the side of the road and that's from all the way down at the recycle center office. And that goes all the way down to the end of the cul-de-sac. We'll be finishing that up over the next two weeks. We wanted to just get to the leaf in the brush pile for right now to see how it would handle the water and it's, it's handling it very well. So drainage on that will be finished up. And then hopefully next year, we can put some sort of articles together where we could actually get that over to a binder and, and finish that project up. So was a mess up there. One of the last projects we've been working on is the library update, ADA. So we, we had some ADA funding with that. That's been held, held up for a couple of years. So we, Town Hall gave us the go-ahead on it and we made Belmont Street sidewalk ADA compliant, tied that into a, a new ADA ramp with parking, which we had a plan from a couple of years, years ago. We tweaked it to make it work and we are currently working and grading on the parking lot right now and updating some of the drainage with, with that. So the railings went in last week. It looks, it looks awesome up there right now. So everybody did a really good job pulling it together. Lastly, I just wanted to touch base and I know I touched a little on it earlier, but we also do a tree replacement program. We were, we're getting a couple of grants every year on that, which falls under drainage. So what we do is any of the trees that we pull down over the, during road construction or, you know, we had to take down, considered dangerous, we, we try to bring, bring those trees back two to one ratio. We try to do it in the construction areas, like if we've been working on Union Street, we offer the homeowners or residents trees at that point, so we can tree line the street. Same thing on East Water Liberty. We have some leftover trees and we try to use them throughout town buildings and, you know, town-owned property at that, at that point, at the end of the year to make sure we're actually a tree-friendly town and not just cutting them down. So I think that is about it for what we've done. We've got probably another seven to 10 days and we'll go from there and we'll get into, we'll get into winter mode at that point. So, but I keep saying we're probably going to get done by October 1st, but we're into November as usual and we're carrying over work that we had this year. And then in retrospect, I thought we got quite a bit done this year with, with all the obstacles we, we had in front of us. And I can't say enough about the crew and my assistant down here and working with everybody at Town Hall, getting the extra funding for us to make this stuff work. So as long as that funding keeps coming in, we can keep moving forward. That's it. Any questions?
Yeah, any, any questions or comments for Dave?
No question. Just, you know, want to say thank you, Dave. You know, we, we certainly have seen some significant projects and improvements over the last few years of our roads. You know, and want to thank the townspeople for, for supporting and allowing it. But I know you and your crew do a lot of this work in-house, which has actually, you know, added, you know, mileage to, to what, what the town has been able to get done. So, you know, hats off to you coordinating this and the crew, you know, really, you know, really working and getting it done. So I just want to say thank you.
Appreciate it. So like I said, as long as we, we have the funding, we don't mind doing the projects and work hand in hand with everybody up there. Everybody's come up, been pretty creative on where we can get some funding and finish up a lot of these projects. So as long as the residents keep voting on some of these articles, we can keep moving this town forward. So just happy to be a part of that.
Anybody else? Karen?
Hi, Dave. Thank you for your thorough update. We appreciate all the work you and your team do. We've seen some significant improvements throughout the town. So thank you for all you do and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
So Dave, just, just from, from my perspective, you know, you know, I, I know you've been extremely busy over the last, you know, few months and since COVID hit, you know, your timeline got pushed forward and your projects, your schedule had to get jumbled around quite a bit. But, you know, it, it's really, really amazing to me just how, how difficult your job is in the sense of actually being able to stick to and adhere to a schedule that you put together. I mean, all of these projects that you have, then you throw in a microburst that takes down trees and wires all over town, which you're also the, the tree warden. So you guys are, are out there and you're not just out there taking, you know, the stuff that's clearly blocking the road. But, but I heard some great stories of you guys, you know, helping, assisting residents with, with tree limbs that were down in the fronts of their property that, that might have been, you know, overlapping the sidewalk or whatever and just helping them out and taking care of them. And then, you know, you guys are trying to get caught back up. We get finally three days of rain and, and a snowstorm and you guys are out there for 24 hours sanding, salting and, you know, conditioning the roads and plowing. You know, it's just really impressive, you know, your level of organization. And, and, you know, the fact that when you and I were talking briefly the other day, you said you were looking forward to the winter, which, you know, I, I figure somebody in the highway department, the last thing they want to do is, is go through a winter season, which I guess just tells you, you know, to, speaks to the volume of work that you, you guys have been doing over the summer, that it might actually seem like a break to get to work a few 24-hour shifts in a row, you know? So with that, Dave, I just, you know, I thought it was important that you, you update the residents because there have been a lot of questions and I think some, some misconceptions as well as to the amount of, you know, work and due diligence that you do and, and your team does before you do a project, you know, like that intersection, for example. I mean, there was a lot of work and a lot of years that went into the planning of that intersection. And, and there's a lot of things that you couldn't, you couldn't do because, you know, we, we all answer at some level to the state with it being their, their road. So, so I just, I just wanted to have an opportunity for you to come out and explain to the residents all the stuff that you guys have been doing and, and just kind of clarify, you know, how you were able to get these things done. And I just also wanted us to have a chance to, to thank you formally for your hard work and you continued dedication, so.
No, I, I appreciate it. Like I said, we, I've surrounded myself with really good, good people down here to work with. My assistant Sue and all the guys, honestly, we, actually we throw more and more work at them every year. I keep lying to them and saying it's going to get less every year, but we, we always have more. But they bought into the program and I honestly, I can't thank them. I thank the crew enough, everybody down here. And like I said, you guys up, up to Town Hall, you're very creative on how we can get some funding and, and then hopefully we have some articles coming up this year, some road articles. And hopefully we can, you know, like I said, we, we have a good, a great 10-year plan and, you know, hopefully we can adhere to it and, you know, keep moving forward. So with everything else going on, so, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for joining.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, next on the agenda, you know, I, I was just going on about how Dave has been extremely busy, but this person has probably been the busiest person in, in Town Hall for the last two or three months anyway. Town clerk Donna Shortoff with an election update. Donna, you with us? She's on mute.
Hi.
Hi, Donna. Sorry to wake you.
Yeah, kind of. Yeah, it has been very busy. We just finished the primary and they sent out the, or they sent out the postcards for everybody to be able to vote remotely. And then they started making promises that, you know, the ballots were going to get out and we didn't even have them. So it's been really, really stressful, very, very time-consuming. We sent out, started sending out ballots for this election, October 7th. Started getting them back on October 8th because everybody wanted to be first. We have 12,657 registered voters in town. We had just under 6,000, and I mean 5,975 that we've counted so far, people that have voted early, either by mail or the three, the three weeks of early voting in person was very, that one was nice because although it was steady, it was, there weren't a lot of lines. So people were able to come in and vote and, you know, get out and everybody got their I-vote sticker because that's very important. And so they were pleased with that. We had just under 4,000 voters come through the polls. So we, at the moment, and when I say that, not every ballot has been counted yet because we have ballots that are still coming in as long as they were postmarked by the third. They can be counted until the sixth. They have to have arrived by the sixth. So we still are counting those ballots every day. We're still counting ones that, I don't know if you're familiar with provisional ballots. If you go into the polls and, you know, you feel that you are supposed to be on the voting list and we can't find you, you vote what's called a provisional ballot. It gets sealed in an envelope and we do an investigation. We look at the RMV. We look at past records to see if, why you're not there, if you were deleted in error or if indeed you have now registered somewhere else. RMV will do a search for us to see if you did indeed go to the registry and want to, to register to vote. It didn't come through or you did it online and it didn't come through. We had a gentleman that, that's, that was the case. So his ballot gets counted. It may take up to a week to get it, to get the search from the registry because of the numbers that can come in. So we're still counting those ballots. We have to count anything that has a write-in on a ballot. We have to account for every write-in. So we have to go through the ballots and make sure that anyone that's made a mark on it, we have to account for that. So that's a long process. So we are still working on the numbers, but we have just close to 10,000 voters that have voted in this election. So I don't, I'm tired. I'm sorry. It was a very long day yesterday. Started at 5:30 and we finally called it at just before midnight. So, and we started it up again today. So if anybody has any questions, I, we've had a lot of people that have called because the state instituted a track your ballot website. And people call and say, why doesn't my ballot show up? I have no idea because when I look in the system, you know, it came, came in back in, I had one today who called and said, you know, husbands does show, wives doesn't. I looked, they both came in on the 19th. So they've been there, they're already counted, they're already recorded. I don't know. I didn't design the state website. So if people have questions, they can call, absolutely. Well, you know, we'll look it up in the system. I had some questions about, you know, how safe is our program? Voting machines in this state are all independent. There is no, we're not online, you can't hack into it. It's all, the, the recording of the ba, of the ballots is right within the machine. We run a tape at the end of the night and that's where the figures come from. So it's nothing that can be hacked, it can't be changed. We're not throwing away ballots. Every single ballot is accounted for and everything is public. Anybody that wanted to come up and watch, we posted it, we had it posted on the walls. We posted it as, as a public meeting, so you can always come in and see. We answer any questions. We did a great little civics class for a young man who came up to vote with his mom and dad because we took him through the process. So he was, I hope his teacher was going to give him, because he was going to go and see if he could get extra credit for it. But it was very successful. We had a few little events, but nothing It was very successful. We had a few little events, but nothing compared to what could have happened. I love the, the voters in Rockland. I absolutely have to do a shout out to all of the election workers because they were. Very professional, they work very hard. It's, it's very hard to plan. Of an election under these conditions because you don't know how many people are gonna show up. To try to plan for the possibility of twelve thousand voters showing up. And keeping them safe and keeping the workers safe is very, very. Complicated. So I really have to do a shout out to all of the workers. They went above and beyond and all of the voters, the voters were fantastic. We. We only had a couple, you know, a couple little glitch along the way because people wanted to wear their candidates. Apparel or hats or, and it's just not, it's not allowed because it's campaigning within the hundred and fifty foot. So for the most part, people were great about it. You tell them, you know, you can't wear that hat in, uh in the polls, they take it off. And so the people in Rockland are great. I really need to thank them.
Awesome. Uh anybody have any questions or comments for Donna?
I just wanted to say thank you um to uh, to you, uh your staff, uh all those that uh. That worked the polls. Uh I know it's been a tough couple of months. Um and uh just appreciate all the effort and um wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Uh yeah, so Donna, I, I just had, you know, a couple of questions and actually, you know, comments. One, I thought, I thought it was great yesterday. Uh the way you guys utilized the cafeteria at the middle school. Uh I have never voted so quick in my life. I, I got there and there was a line uh out the door. And somebody came out and said, you know, if you're precinct three, uh there is, you know, that's the line for precinct three, but if you're precinct four, there's nobody voting in precinct four. So I just got to bypass the entire line. And of course, everybody just accused me of, you know, oh, well, you get special treatment and it wasn't the case. And then. I was really impressed too with how uh. How sensitive, I guess, the ballot uh machines were. I had actually, when I sat down to vote, I dropped my pen. And it hit my ballot and left an ink mark on, I choice that I wasn't making. So when I filled in the other choice, I went to put my ballot through, it rejected. So, so when you said that you didn't throw any ballots away, you did throw up my first ballot. Because I had to go back and do it again. But I, I was really impressed with the process and it was really uh from. From, you know, the COVID measures you guys took, the second I got up from voting, somebody's wiping down, you know, the table, some wiping down the pens. Um you know, i- it couldn't have been easy to coordinate, Donna, and, and I appreciate the, the work you did. Uh did you notice uh? Did you notice people with the early voting or with the mail-in voting? Uh well, not so much the early voting, but with the mail-in voting, did you notice people at all coming to vote in person? That had already done the mail-in vote? Because I know, I've heard that that's been a thing where they haven't like trusted that it would, went through or they came to check on it in that, that manner, you know?
We did have a number of people who. Got a ballot at home and when I asked what they had done with it, because if they showed up in person to early vote. They'd come into my office and I'd say, well, you know, what did you do with the, the ballot? Because I need to be able to account for them. And some of them had it out in the car, some of them had it, you know, it was, oh, it's on my kitchen table, but I was driving by. And it's, it's tough because yes, that's their option. Ob- obviously, everybody has the option to vote in, in person. But. It left a lot, uh, uh, people were great. I would say, well, if you're driving by, could you bring the ballot up just right across the outside? That you voted in person and stick it in the, the um drop slot? And nine out of ten would do that. So I mean, I have, I have a box of. Uh ballots that I can account for because people came up and dropped them off. But it, it's such a new concept because in. Early voting has up until now basically been in person. So this whole mailing it to them. A lot of people did it because they weren't sure of the, the circumstances where, you know, were we gonna have another. Um spike in numbers. But then when they got it home, they were not comfortable with it. A lot of them would call because they didn't wanna mail it. And once I told them they could drop it in the drop slot and it goes right in the. Collector's office, it never leaves the building. Uh you know, it comes right down to me, they felt much better about it. So I think it's, it's all a big learning curve. Some people didn't think twice about putting it back in the mail. And some people just needed to know that they were delivering it to town hall. Or once they got it, they would come in with their voted ballot. During early voting and instead of having the go, them go up to the drop slot, I had them come in so that. They could know that I checked them in and that way they had the confirmation that. You are recorded, your vote has been, you know, it registered with the state so that everybody knows that you've voted. So it's a learning curve. It was, it was very interesting. But like I say, people were fabulous. So. And I got to meet so many people.
I bet, I bet with that turnout. Uh well, you and your, your staff did a excellent job and uh. And Donna, I mean, you, you've got one more thing coming. You got that special town meeting, which, which should be easy and then. That's smooth sailing for you, we hope. So appreciate your hard work over the last, last, you know, what, six years anyway. So uh five or six years. So. You know, we appreciate you, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
I have none.
Okay, uh old business, uh special town meeting warrant, Monday, eleven sixteen, two thousand twenty at seven PM, Rockland High School.
Alright, thanks Mike. So this is really just a reminder to the public that we are having a special town meeting on Monday night, the sixteenth. Uh I don't know what the record is for the quickest town meeting, but whatever it is, we might be able to break it with this one. Um there's only three articles. The first one is the most important one. That's where we're looking to restore. A little over eight hundred ninety thousand dollars uh budget cuts that we had to make in the spring. Um we're gonna try to, are gonna restore those funds to the general government and the school department budget. Uh second article is just paying a few small prior year bills. And then article three, I know we had talked about this one before. This is to uh fund the response time study for the fire, fire department. Uh we have had further discussions with the developer that I talked about and I, I do still believe that ultimately they will fund this study. Uh but I won't have a check in hand before town meeting. And so I, I still would like to move ahead with this article and get the authorization. And ultimately, if we don't need to spend it, then we certainly don't have to spend it. But I, I still think it would be useful to go ahead and vote the article. Uh and really, that's it. I think it should be a, a pretty quick town meeting. I'll obviously be able to. Answer any questions that anybody from the public has about any of the numbers and any of the restorations that we're, we're proposing to be made.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Next on the agenda, county administrators, important correspondence, Doug?
Thanks, Mike. Um just a couple of things tonight. Uh. Been working with Jen and with our assistant town administrator and the library. To finalize the specifications for the window replacement project that was funded at a previous town meeting from the Community Preservation Act. So we worked with a consultant to help us finalize the bid specs. We have that portion done. So now it's just a matter of putting the actual. Procurement documents together, which we're gonna get on right away and within the next month or so. Uh we intend to go out to bid for that project. So that'll be a, a really significant improvement for the library. You know, a lot of these windows are rotted out and. Uh they're just, they're not in good shape. So this will be a significant improvement to the envelope of that building. So we look forward to moving ahead with that. On the COVID nineteen front, a- as I think everybody in the community now knows. You know, we are still in the red along with most of our neighboring communities as well. Uh and as of this morning, according to our local board of health, we have fifty-one cases in town. Uh and none of which are, are in the nursing homes. Uh and I also just wanna highlight to, to the board and to the public that we are still actively. Uh trying to hire a public health nurse or a public health nursing consultant that can assist the board of health with. All the actions that they need to take during the pandemic. Um also, as most of you are aware, and just for the general public as well, Governor Baker did issue a new executive order. I think this was number fifty-three. Uh and I just thought I'd very quickly mention a couple of the highlights, because these are important things for the community. There's a revised stay-at-home advisory, which is asking residents to stay at home between. Ten PM and five AM unless there's, you know, urgent matters that they need to attend to. There's also the early closure of certain businesses and activities each night, starting at nine thirty PM. And some of the highlights. For Rockland include restaurants, liquor stores, indoor-outdoor events, youth and adult amateur sports. And close contact personal services, which the biggest example for us on Union Street here is. Uh hair and nail salons. So those all now have to close at nine thirty PM. There's also the requirement that everyone needs to wear face coverings in all public spaces, even when we can maintain six feet of distance from others. So that, that's a change from before. And there's new limitations on indoor gatherings, even in private residences, limited to only ten people. And outdoor gatherings at private residences limited to twenty-five people. I think it's those gatherings that. Uh the state feels is leading to the increased surge in cases and the increased number of hospitalizations. Uh moving on to the budget, you know, we're, we're trying to get started for FY twenty-two. Normally, we'd be well underway by now, but. Of course, we're still wrapping up FY twenty-one. Um with our special town meeting coming up. And of course, the state hasn't even finalized their FY twenty-one budget. So we, we are, we're gonna very quickly after this special town meeting do our best to get going on FY twenty-two and. We'll make sure to meet the charter timeframes for the board to have a budget presented to you by the end of December, which then you can forward to the finance committee. Given a- all the uncertainty that we're at with local revenues as well as the state budget, this will likely be just a very preliminary budget, which we'll need to. Um update quite a bit and once we get more information. And then lastly, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, uh we do have a new veterans agent, Tim White. He's gonna start working tomorrow, which is Thursday, November fifth. Um he does come with significant experience. Um you know, our prior veterans agent, Vinnie Fontaine, is gonna show him the lay of the land. Um and is gonna help introduce him throughout, introduce him to staff throughout the day uh tomorrow. Uh and our assistant town administrator has scheduled a meeting with the other community service departments tomorrow afternoon to uh. Bring him on board. So we, we really do anticipate a seamless transition with Tim and we wanna welcome him to the town. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Uh next on the agenda is selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily. Reflect the views of the board of selectmen and that the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Uh Mr. Penny.
I have no comments tonight.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Ryan? You're on mute.
Um no comments.
Thank you, Eric. Ms. Diamond?
I don't have any comments either.
Wow, this is, this is gonna be easy, because I don't have any comments either. So with that, I will entertain a motion. Uh to adjourn the shortest meeting in the Doug Lap ever. So I got a motion. Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor, Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Diamond?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you. Good night, Rockland.